Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the joint meeting of the Select Board and Planning Board of October 10th, 2023 at 7:02. We call the meeting to order for the Planning Board.
I have to make a motion that Sarah is going to be our chairman for tonight.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, and I'll call the meeting to order. All in favor? All those in favor? I call the meeting of the Select Board to order.
Excellent. If we would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
If we would pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we, I believe, we only have one applicant for the Associate Planning Board member, Mr. Bill Cullen, who we met at our last meeting also. Is there anything you'd like to talk about, Mr. Cullen?
No, not anyone has any questions.
Well, if you'd come on up here, you've got, I see you've got a lot of experience working with schools, university, hospitals, and other facilities. Construction documents, you've lived in Carver for seven years, served on the FinCom, Elementary School Council, and the Board of Directors of the Carver Youth Basketball League. So you've been very busy. So, thank you for applying, first of all. Do we have any questions from any of the board members?
I don't have any questions, other than thank you very much. I think it's important for the public to know how vested you are in our town, and most particularly, having served on the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep, I believe you'll be an asset to the Planning Board.
Awesome.
And that is a fine beginner beard.
All right, please.
Sarah? No, we just appreciate your application and hanging in there.
And we, just so everybody knows, we met with you before and had a discussion, and you gave us your credentials. And again, thank you for applying.
Yes, again, again, thank you for your time, and you committed to the town, as well as being on the Finance Committee.
You've answered all my questions at the prior meeting, so I don't have any questions. So barring any questions from anybody else, I'm going to open it for a vote. And Mr. Williams is our newest member. I'm going to open it up from the left side to the right side.
I vote aye.
To approve Mr. Cullen for the Associate Membership. Excellent.
And I also vote aye for the Associate Membership. Thank you very much.
Kevin Robinson votes aye.
John Gasky, aye.
Colonel Yashay says aye.
I'll make a motion for the Select Board to appoint a candidate.
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you very much. You'll get a letter of approval through, I believe the Select Board Office will issue it to you, and you can bring it down to the town clerk, and she'll sign you in, and we'll have a packet for you before the next meeting. Thank you. You have a good evening.
All right.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, we're just going to...
Can I have a motion to adjourn the Select Board meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Select Board meeting is adjourned.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Andy. We don't re-adjourn, we're still in session, so our first order of business is a minor modification request by DK Properties LLC for a minor modification to site plan, 94 Street in the General Business Zoning District, discussion impossible, vote. If you would just state your name.
Good evening, I'm Stephanie Hoben for Strongpoint Engineering Solutions here representing DK Properties. I want to apologize for not bringing a board with the plan on it. Last time we were here, you were only using the computer.
Oh, well, they've provided us with, well, you've provided us with this, and we have the prior, the prior plan here, which was just given to us.
Yep, so there's just, there were a few minor improvements over the proposed plan. We added roughly 1,000 square feet of pavement. We've added a few extra parking spaces in the, in the bath, two extra parking spaces, and kind of a little more room to turn around. And then the most significant change is the planting, where to provide more of a screen instead of the, I think, nine arborvitae that were originally on the plan. Dan, the owner, has actually planted, I think, close to 60, kind of lining both property lines.
All right, why do you need more parking?
We're just going to make more.
You'd have to, you have to come up, give your name. It's...
Sorry.
It's for the minutes.
Hi, my name is Dan DeSesri, the owner of 94th Street. So I just added parking spaces because it made sense to turn around in the back. It was getting tight towards the building to turn around and have space there, so I added spaces. I kind of just squared off that corner. If you look on the original plan, it kind of jogged in, and I kind of just squared it off.
With the edge of the building?
Yes.
How is...
And you were able to make two spaces out of that?
Yeah, two spaces, and I bumped out the side coming up towards the abutting plot, I think. Did I? Yes. Yeah, I think I bumped that out maybe like a foot. It was getting like really tight when I laid it out for parking spaces on the side of the building from what was proposed, once I laid it out.
Right. Now, my, Mr. Chair, if you...
Please, please.
My concern with that is how did the Deputy Fire Chief feel about that turning radius if they're going to be able to access the whole entire area with their equipment? Let's say a car's parked there, you know, are they still going to be able to make maneuver that corner?
Yeah, because I actually added spaces and made it bigger. They have more room now than they did before.
I understand that. You made more room.
Yes.
But if a car is in that space.
Yes.
Is that going to be a problem with, you know, maneuverability?
I, I don't think so. I mean, it's bigger.
You made the space, but if a car is in it, it's not really a space.
No, so he, the way it's extended, there's more room, there's two spots next to the existing row, but there's not, he also extended kind of the area to the edge of the building, so there's actually more room for turning around than there was before. So even if those two spots are in use, there'll still be more of a drive aisle than there was before.
Because if you compare the old to the new, you can kind of see what I mean, because before there was nothing there. It was just gravel before.
Yeah, I wish the planner was here so I could, so I could compare that, you know. I think, because, you know, I don't want to hold you up, but I think I would like to have the Deputy Fire Chief just okay that way, that's all.
Yeah, that's fine.
We didn't approve it.
Mr. Chair, I can weigh in on that item, too.
Please, please do, Andy.
Andy Glyons, Fuston O'Neill, technical review for, on behalf of the town. It does look, as the applicant mentioned, they're maintaining the drive aisle width between the building and the parking spaces. Is that correct?
Yes.
I was trying to locate the turning movement plan that's usually provided, and I believe we reviewed previously for the original, but I wasn't able to find in the plans at the moment. But I'd recommend, if you do request the applicant, to have the Deputy Fire Chief, Jesse Boyle, review it, that the applicant sends the turning movement plan with that, so then it'll be easier for him to compare what changed.
And what, all right, and...
Five-foot gravel sidewalks out with the side of the building was offset from the building to install HVAC materials, and was installed at 10 feet. Is that going to affect your, your side buffers? Because I, I don't see it.
It was actually a proposed five-foot concrete apron.
Yeah.
That I got rid of, so that was actually part of the impermeable surface.
Okay.
That I added to the parking lot, too, so it didn't go over.
And we're, and we're still outside of the buffer.
Okay. Yeah, because I could see the gravel walkway. I see, yep, all right, I could see it on the original plans. And we did not approve the gravel storage area. That is going to have to be removed, and it was not approved, and conditions will have to be set on a storage area for any commercial industry. And it says the berm is partially installed, or is it completely installed?
So they've actually added the loom since we did the, that plan.
So...
So that's a progress-as-built?
Okay, because it says that it was only installed in the area of the catch basin.
The curbing, yes. So the curbing is, hasn't been completely installed. We haven't done the top coat of the parking lot, because right now, the abutting property is constructing, they have a six-foot retaining wall right at the edge of the property line, and Dan is actually allowing them to work on it from his side. So rather than put the top coat on and have it...
I just don't want it to set.
I get that. I understand that.
I was just holding off on it.
So once they're done, then we can put the top coat with the keep-con berm on.
And you've made it a gravel walkway rather than a concrete walkway?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Because it's really just for emergency access.
All right. Questions from the board? Anything to add, Andy?
One other item I would like to point out is on the landscaping plan. The applicant did mention this significant increase in arborvitae's that have been planted along the side yard property lines, but I do want to acknowledge that there was a change from the original plant material that was proposed that included some other species, sugar maples, pine oaks, azaleas. So just want to make sure that the board is aware and acknowledges that change as well. I don't think that there's an issue with the screening that they're proposed, but I know sometimes the board does want to see some habitat value in the plant material. I don't know if that's something that is of interest here, maybe along the street frontage in lieu of, I don't think there'd be much value for the side yards, but defer to the board on that item as far as plant material goes.
Do we have room to fit the, any deciduous trees in, in the, in the front area?
So the plans actually show just arborvitae's in the front, and that's what I put in.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I put in what the plan wanted in the front. I just changed the sides.
Right, okay, yeah.
Way more.
I do appreciate the fact that you added a significant amount of trees.
Yeah.
At first, I wasn't happy with how much clearing had to take place in order to do this, so I was grateful to see the amount of trees that were added.
Yeah, I planned on doing it in the back of my head afterwards. Once I saw it all, like, I really need some privacy, so I put in a bunch of trees.
Yeah, the larger trees would break it up, but then the fact that you went to the trouble to add all the extra trees was really nice, so...
And the abutter to the right of me is putting a six-foot fence along the hallway, too, which wasn't even approved when I got this lot approved, too. So you're really not even going to see the trees I even put in.
Yeah.
I see the trees. Well, the trees you put in there are going to be eight-foot trees, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I see the trees. I live on Egypt Road, so I'm on Forest, I'm on Forest, four times, four times a day. I've watched everything that you've done there, and I'm very happy with it, and I was happy to see more trees. I just would have liked to have seen a little bit more variety, but I am happy with the amount.
All right. I think I put in 78 trees.
I counted them myself, yes. And as far as the back is concerned, how much of a buffer did you leave on the back?
I didn't touch the 50-foot buffer at all in the back.
Okay, good, good. So we're not going to have to hear the neighbors come in and say that they can hear everything that's going on.
Nope.
Hopefully that will adjust for the sound. Okay.
So as far as the gravel I put in back for a storage area, what do I have to do with that?
You're going to have to come back for modification to the site plan, and it's gonna, there's going to be conditions set on it, and then there's going to be more screening in regards to that.
So if I put loom back there, am I good? I just want to keep this thing rolling, because the building's been sitting there unrented.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't even be on, on there. It shouldn't, it's, because it was, right? It was supposed, I thought it was supposed to be all natural back there, but any sort of storage area is going to have to fall into conditions, especially in a non-impermeable surface in regards to what can be stored back there. Is the screening going to be appropriate? Is it lit? Entrance and exit from it?
I think Dan's asking is if we just pull up the storage and replant it?
You, what do I have to do to push this forward, really?
You'll have to come back for another modification if you want to go with a gravel storage area. But again, you...
So if he just wants to grass it, he can...
Because the original plans really don't even show anything.
Well, the original plans show a berm, it shows...
The trees.
It shows a curbing and natural vegetation back there. It says the tree line.
20 feet off of...
Right.
Looks like about 20 feet or so.
And, and we were kind of looking for a lot of screening for the neighbors back there.
I mean, they still have over 50 feet.
And there's a curb, yeah, but there's activity going to be going on back there. We don't even know what's going to be stored back there. We're going to have, where's the, the snow removal going to go? Is oil going to be seeping into the ground? And what kind of materials are going to be stored back there? Is it going to be appropriately screened from the residences? So if you want to put a storage back there, you're going to have to come, come in for a modification in regards to it, and we're going to have to know what's going to be stored in there, and what your planned usage for that area is.
Or we can just reggrass it.
That's whatever I got to do.
Mr. Chair, I can weigh in on that as well. As I'd recommend, if the board was going to vote on the minor mod, including condition, to have them topsoil and seed that gravel area, and if there was still a concern, you could add a condition to have the applicant add some sort of vehicle barrier, whether it be a boulder or a bollard, or something to close the gap between the dumpster pad in that corner and the stormwater depression. And then if the applicant wanted to come back at a later date, remove the vehicle barrier and propose access and storage back there, then at least that would give a definitive, you know, condition that the applicant would have to come back on to, you know, utilize that, right, space.
Right, right.
So I would much rather do that, if possible. I didn't even think of that. Just so nothing can go back there anyways to block it off, I can keep it moving, and then I can kind of decide what I'm doing afterwards, so nothing can be parked back there.
And Fuston O'Neill wouldn't have a strong preference on what type of barrier to use, if it's easier to get, you know, just a boulder or a couple boulders over there, if that's the aesthetic you're looking for, or if you don't have the equipment to move a boulder and just want to put a sonotube and a bollard, you know, that would be effective as well. So I guess I wouldn't write into the condition of approval a specific vehicle barrier and, you know, give the applicant, you know, some options there.
Just plant it over and leave it, leave it natural.
I would, that's where I'd be, that would be my leaning to, Don. All right, but you, you feel the distance between the, the building and the parking spaces maintains the requirements of the fire department. I think we, we should still ask Jesse Boyle to review it, and we'll set that as a condition of approval.
Does that usually take some time to get Jesse?
No, Jesse will...
No, I'll call him tomorrow. He'll probably come out tomorrow and look at it.
Because I know you want to get that open as soon as possible.
Yeah, so the only question really is the back area. I mean, I would, I'd even put like a jersey barrier there or something to make it more permanent, instead of putting a pole that I could obviously just take out. I mean, once I put a jersey barrier back there, I have no way of moving it anyways, and then I can kind of decide if I want to push to keep it a storage, because I want to put the billings back there, and I'd like to not cover it now, if possible.
Well, it's, it's going to have to be replanted.
Even if I put a barrier there?
It shouldn't have been touched to begin with.
So if I put grass back there, I wouldn't need to put a barrier, because...
Well, you'd still need some sort of curb or, or something.
Oh, all right, all right, then.
But, but we'll leave that up, up to you, but...
All right.
There should be conditions so that we can keep...
What was that?
Is it just sliding chair or?
Oh, no.
Oh, good.
You're not my age.
What's your thoughts?
I'm, I'm happy with, with what he's done out there, because like I said, I, I was, I, I looked at it specifically today and saw a significant amount of additional trees out there, which made me really happy. And I happen to know a guy that's in the area that might have a piece of equipment that could put a boulder there for you. He might be in the room, too.
That is good to know.
Thoughts, Mr. Gasky?
Well, I'm good. I got, I'm right along the same lines as you guys with regards to that. My only concern was the, the side buffers, but I think we got that covered.
All right. As a conditions of approval, it has to be approved by the fire department, that the storage area is, is, is out, needs to be grassed and reseeded. There should be a curb there, but I know you guys aren't doing the top coat, so some sort of obstruction. You know, if it was a lunch eating area, it'd be, it'd be one thing, but material storage area is, is, is a completely different animal, so we're going to require that to be reggrassed.
I mean, what really differentiates it from a lunch eating area? I don't have any plans to even put anything back there. It was just the trees were gone. I had to do something with it.
Right, well, you could be...
I don't really have overflow to even go over there.
Then it, it's, it shouldn't, it should be a non-issue, then?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So I will accept the motion to approve based on the conditions that we outlined.
I will make that said motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Sodillo. Do we have any further discussion?
Can we respecify the conditions?
It has to be approved by the fire department. We have to have approval letter from the fire department. The, the storage area has to be reseeded and grassed over, and a barrier, a drive-through barrier, has to be placed there, whether it's a curb or whatever the case may be.
Some type of vehicle berm.
Yeah.
So a keep-con berm would consider that if it's grassed back there and I have my keep-con berm back there? Is that considered just a question? I don't, I don't even know.
I, I'd be okay with that, because it's consistent with what the original plan was, to have a curb and then have it seeded. If, my intent was, if they were going to leave it gravel, then to add the vehicle barrier, because a gravel area would be more enticing to use as a outdoor storage. But if they're going to spread topsoil and reseed it, I think just having a berm to make sure that, that landscape is protected during snow removal and the stormwater is getting to where it needs to be, I think that's appropriate.
All right. So that's the condition, then?
Roger that.
All right, further questions, discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gasky?
Aye. Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sodillo says aye.
John Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much. You have a good evening.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is requested by RP BP, which stands for...
Ricketts Pond Business Park.
Yes, thank you. LLC for a minor modification to site plan, 46 Spring Street, in the Spring Street Innovation Zoning District.
Good evening, Planning Board members. My name is Eric Shoemaker. I was the engineer in this project. I'm from Mackenzie Engineering Group. We're in front of you to request approval of a minor modification for the site plan at 46 Spring Street in Carver. That was the four May lot out front of the Ricketts Pond Business Park subdivision. So just a little background on the changes and why, why the site was built as it was. I believe, what was it, last, last fall, when we were getting heavy rainfall, we were having issues with erosion and sedimentation of the slope, particularly the side slope of the site, abutting the 65-foot buffer to the wetlands. As a result of that, the applicant constructed a retaining wall along the rear of the site and sort of leveled out the, the grade immediately adjacent to the building. So he did not encroach the limit of pavement, but he did provide a, a gravel apron adjacent to the stone retaining wall that was constructed. The elevations of the rear parking area were adjusted accordingly. The, it's worth noting, the rear of the site was raised in elevation four feet in grade. There were some changes to the prefabricated building. It wasn't constructed at grade as we shown on the design plans with the four-foot differential for the loading docks. Instead, it was constructed at grade. So back to the modular block retaining wall, it was approximately four feet in height and constructed at the rear of the development and within that 65-foot no-impermeable buffer zone. That retaining wall was coordinated with the Carver Conservation Commission, and they agreed with the strategy in order to decrease erosion and sedimentation control and ease that slope down to the wetlands. Instead of having a two-to-one slope, we were able to ease it out to closer to a three-to-one. As I mentioned, approximately 16 feet of gravel is located between that wall and the limit of pavement, which was approved under the original order of conditions. The, the other change worth noting is, because of that grade differential, we weren't able to construct the parking area in a way to push the stormwater to the north of the site. That catch basin that you see in the southern corner of the ASBO plan was constructed after the fact to capture that stormwater from the new flattened area and then convey it back to the, the infiltration basin for Ricketts Pond. There's no increase in stormwater directed at Ricketts Pond. That area was already supposed to drain to the basin anyways. directed at Ricketts Pond. That area was already supposed to drain to the basin anyways. So it's really the catch basin and the retaining wall, which was, you know, further expensed to the applicant, but was constructed, um, we believe as a betterment to the site. And I will finish off by, uh, mentioning the, uh, revision to the ASBOL plan I sent over to Andy and, uh, Michelle and the town planner earlier this morning. Uh, really minor, uh, comments, but I, I addressed a few of Andy's concerns there. I added the square footage to the building. Um, we calced it out to be 7,495 square feet. Uh, and I believe the other change was the invert pipe into the infiltration basin. We just specified the elevation of that pipe and those were just comments from Andy's, um, inspection letter. I have copies with me if anyone would like to see it. Uh, but that really concludes the request for the approval and, uh, I, I know Mike here has some pictures of the erosion and sedimentation and, um, really proves the, the, the need for that retaining wall at the time and we can pass those around as well.
Did you do a site walk, Andy? I, I don't have anything from Andy and the only thing I have is September 26th.
Andy Glines with Fussin' O'Neill. I did not personally do the inspection, but one of the other, uh, senior engineers from my office conducted a site inspection and, uh, I reviewed his inspection report with him, uh, prior to him issuing it, uh, which is dated September 26th.
Okay.
So, uh, and the conclusion of that inspection report, uh, reads that, um, based on our observations at the site and subject to the satisfactory completion of the, of items, we believe that the work has been completed according to the approved plans and special permit conditions. Uh, FNO believes that the items above are minor and FNO recommends having a small bond established to cover repairs and cleaning if necessary. That small bond recommendation amount was $1,000 and I'm not sure if that was discussed further with, uh, the town planner. Mr. Bott?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, the items that were listed on that have all been completed already. So I don't know if you still want a bond. That's fine. Um, but we, we completed all of the items that were on there.
Yeah. And in that regard, then a, a, a bond wouldn't be needed. Um, if the, uh, I guess actually the applicant did just give me some photos of, uh, some of the site restoration that would have been covered under that bond amount. So, um, in general, I, I don't think there's anything, uh, that's notable discrepancy between what the original approved plans and, um, uh, what's currently on site beyond what the applicant has mentioned. Uh, with the exception of, uh, a tight tank was added for some interior, um, floor drains, but, um, that was reviewed on site as well. And, uh, it's essentially to, um, collect any snow melt water within the building and have that, uh, discharged to the tight tank, which has an alarm on it and will be pumped out in lieu of having that discharged to the stormwater management system.
Can I make a, um, just a statement about that? We, um, we hadn't originally on the original planned, um, planned on putting drainage in, but when we had our rough inspection before the floor was poured, the, um, inspector, the plumbing inspector actually made us do that. And I wasn't aware that we had to do it. Um, so we did it. Um, so he required us to do it. And since then, I've noticed the rest of the buildings in the park don't have it. So I don't know why he made us do it.
Overhead doors, I believe, right?
Well, they all have overhead doors.
Yeah. Just to provide clarification, I, I know that, um, lot two does have, uh, overhead doors as well. I believe it's a regulation. If you drive inside the building with a vehicle, you need to have a tight.
Yes, I, I, I believe you're correct.
Right. He said that we would have to, if we didn't put the tight tank in, we would have to put ballers in front of the door so that cars couldn't go inside. So we, we put it in.
You've repaired the, uh, section of eroded soil in the center, rear center of the project?
Yes. I had picture, I gave Andy some pictures. That was done. There was a curb that the, when they put the top coat on, the guy ran out of three yards of material to do a little berm around the planter. They finished that. And then there was some grass area up on Spring Street and, um, I took pictures of that today. There's actually grass already coming up on that. So we did all that.
So there's a, there is a Cape Cod berm in that small?
Yes.
Area?
The pictures are, are.
I, that's what I'm looking at, the picture.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Please.
Uh, are you concerned with maybe adding another yard of the, uh, what is it? Three, four-inch stone for that front cor- that corner? I just don't want to see you lose your, uh, outside corner pavement on there. It looks like it's a, a bit of a washout, but it could, it could just be the picture.
I'm not sure, uh, Kevin, what you're looking.
It would be very, it would be very minor, just adding some more gravel to it. Just for your sake, I wouldn't want to see the.
Can I?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I don't.
I might not be, you know, I might not be seeing it right. I, I'm more concerned for you losing that corner.
Oh.
Is that?
That's all in there.
Okay. So that's already in there?
Yeah. And there's riprap all along here.
Okay. So you're not going to have to worry about that washing out?
This is, this is, uh, three-quarters stone. This is all.
Okay, great. It's, my concern was for you.
Yeah.
I don't want to see you lose all that work that you did, lose that corner.
I understand. I can put some more in there if you'd like, Ken.
It's not that I need it. It's for your sake, you know?
Yeah, sure.
If you, if you think that you need to add it.
Yeah, we can put some in.
I could, I'm fine with leaving that up to you.
Okay.
What am I looking at, Eric?
Um, that's a washout. If you look at the, the report, there was a blowout in that wall probably two or three months before we put the, um, top coat on and the Cape Cod berm. But when I knew that Fussin' O'Neill was coming out for the inspection, I wanted them to see kind of some of the things that we were up against. So we didn't fix it until after the electric had, uh, increased anymore because we had the Cape Cod berm on there and the water wasn't flowing over that anymore. But these are.
Is, is that area going to be allowed to go back to natural or?
Yeah, it's all, yeah, it's all going to be seen. But this is the kind of stuff we were up against. You can tell. This is what we were fighting.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I can see that.
So we were struggling and so we decided to put the wall in. So you can keep this.
Thank you.
Why don't I have those?
Uh, he just handed them to Andy who's passing around. But this is, this is where I was.
Yep.
Because it looks like wood stuff. So you get the berm put in.
So that's great.
Uh, and that was, that was where the washout was out in back and then he's got, uh, some more pictures of the erosion here.
This is another, it doesn't show the asphalt, but it does show how we did the wall and the guardrail and so.
Yeah. And I'm happy you went with that kind of guardrail instead of the steel one.
Yeah.
You know, I, I like the character of that.
It's pretty beefy. That's a big, that's a big.
Yeah, yeah.
But I like.
I like the idea that.
Pretty heavy beams. You know, wood, not more steel.
Yeah.
You know, it is.
All right. Andy photo two, I think, um, Mr. Robinson, uh, referenced it. Um, the grading there is sufficient to keep the water on the property or is there?
So at, um, at a couple of locations, we acknowledged that there was some real erosion on some of the slopes, but since they had the berm, Cape Cod berm installed, uh, it didn't appear that, that those real erosion locations were getting worse. So as the applicant mentioned, um, they wanted us to see those locations, but they're, um, now that they're, uh, restored, we're not expecting them to erode again now that the berm is in place and the stormwater is being directed to the catch basins within the park.
So there's a berm along the southern side of the prop?
That edge, yes.
Okay.
And as the applicant mentioned, they, they did add one more catch basin on site, but ultimately the stormwater is still being discharged to the same location. Uh, they just added another drain inlet because they didn't have as much pitch to work with across the site.
Yeah. Once the vegetation starts to recover over there, that should.
Yeah.
We've had two, two pretty good storms since and that has stayed solid.
Sounds like it did a lot of work.
And over by the?
On that wall, we spent, we spent almost $100,000.
Wow.
That wasn't in the budget. So, but we, you know, the, taking into consideration that you had the, uh, the, I guess it's a proposed vernal pool? What do they call it?
Yeah.
Potential, potential vernal pool and then the, the tension or retention area in the back. I didn't see how we were going to be able to control it without doing something.
And you put a lot of money into it.
A lot of money.
We'll be, we'll be back in front of conservation on the 25th to request a amended order of conditions. And we've spoken with the fire department and, um, I believe they took the fire truck to the site.
Yeah, they've already, um, signed off on the building, the fire department.
The fire department, all right. Um, yeah, we.
All the inspections are done on the building except for the final.
All right. Cause we're wait, we're still awaiting final conservation commission approvals.
Yeah, we had a meeting with them last week and then we're going back. They, they approved what we did and we just have to modify some of the paperwork.
Now, um, on the southeast corner there where, uh, that picture was, um, we're showing gravel and dirt, uh, are you reseeding that, replanting it?
That has all been reseeded and this is a picture of genetic.
I was going to say, this is where the, the grass is already starting to come back in.
You can see it there. So it's starting to come back up. So that was just taken aside.
Okay. And that's the berm they had to put in. All right.
Yeah. I should have printed this.
And is that just going to go back to?
It probably will be nicer than what's on the road, which is mostly weeds right now, but that'll come up as Kentucky bluegrass.
You mind if I see that, Mike?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Just wanted to see how good it came out.
It's just coming up now. It's like 11 days.
Yep.
Nice.
Yeah. Very good. All right. Thank you.
I see that.
And that's all going to remain natural outside that point?
That's all, uh.
Would it?
Facing Spring Street. So there'll be no activity over there at all. We just put that, uh, rock in there because that was a fairly significant slope heading down towards the, the vernal pool area. So I, I wanted to make sure that was very stable.
Questions, concerns, comments from the board?
I, I think they went above and beyond me, everything that we have asked of them.
It's been a long time coming.
Kept everything outside the 65 and, uh.
Well, we, that wasn't part of this, but.
Right. But they, what they did, they made, they made sure to stay outside the 65 and everything. That was really good.
All right. So if there's no further questions, um, we, we still have to wait for the final approval for CONCOM.
Right. Could we make that a con- a condition or do we have to do that?
It kind of.
I guess my only problem, this is, I'll just explain this to you. Five tenants. We've had the building finished for two months and I haven't been able to do anything with it. It's costing me 20 grand a month just to carry it. And if I could just get that as part of a condition, then I could probably get Rod out there, get a final and get these people in the building.
I'd like to see that be able to happen here. I don't know. We have the authority to give that as our condition though.
I say, I don't know if it's, I mean, I think we can make that, but I don't know if we have the authority to make that on their behalf.
Well, it's.
Well, they have already.
I've done the special permit 4300 where, where the final.
Oh, okay.
Because of, because of over 10,000 square feet of the property, but they never applied for that. So.
According to Fussin' O'Neill, the project is awaiting final conservation commission approvals. They recommend the town planner review the status of the commission's approvals final to prior acceptance, prior to final.
If I may, um, uh, Andy Glines of Fussin' O'Neill again. Uh, the board could make, uh, a conditional approval that the town planner review the, um, order of conditions from the conservation commission and ensure that none of their conditions conflict with your conditions here, uh, or the prior conditions of the approval. And that would, um, potentially allow the applicant to avoid coming back to the planning board for one more meeting and, uh, potentially allow him to, um, get a final certificate of occupancy and get the tenants in. I don't, um, I don't know. I guess it's, based on these changes and since the conservation commissions already reviewed the change in the wall and I think it's unlikely that they would have any conditions that would.
All right. So we can conflict with your approval.
They're meeting tomorrow, right? Or is it next?
25th.
We're going to meet the 25th. So it's, so I'm just thinking it's another month, another 20 days.
Yeah, we, we meet on the 24th, I think, again. So it would be the day. That would be holding them up for another, another month. Um, all right. Uh, the chair will accept a motion to approve the minor modification by Ricketts Pond Business Park for 46 Spring Street with the condition that, um, final conservation commission approvals and no conflicting orders of conditions.
I will make that said motion.
Yeah, I'd be happy to second it.
Further questions or discussions? Seeing none, Mr. Gatsky?
Aye. Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sodillo says aye.
John Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye.
Thank you very much, Gatsky.
Have a good night.
Take care.
I, I have the revised plans. Just make a quick revision today and put in the square footage and the outlet pipe. Would you, would you like me to leave them here?
I, 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 we, we will want them if you have them. We'll take everything you got.
Yeah, as Mr. Bott will take them.
Pictures of the evidence.
Thank you.
To the materials we received. So I don't want those getting lost either. All right. Um, I never got a, anything from Fussin' O'Neill on this yet, Andy?
Fussin' O'Neill hasn't issued a formal memo yet. We have, uh, conducted our initial review and I have drafts out of comments, but, um, after the hearing today, we'll finalize those and get those to the applicant ownership team.
All right. I just wanted to check. All right. Good evening. Our next order of business is a public hearing. Uh, this is continued. It's continued without testimony from the last, from the last meeting and it was continued on the request of the applicant. It is on the application of Preolo Concrete Forms Inc. requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 2270, 4341, 5300, 3100, 3351 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 93 North Main Street in Carver, Mass. Assessors map 18 lots 22AR and 22CR in the Village Business Zoning District. The project consists of the construction of a mixed-use building, associated utilities, stormwater controls, parking lots, and access drives. The building will be used as a craftsman tradesman building and have four two-bedroom residential units above. Any person interested and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. All right. If you gentlemen would introduce yourselves or whoever's speaking anyways.
Sure. Uh, for the record, my name's Bob Rego. I'm with Riverhawk Environmental. I'm the civil engineer on the project.
Hi, Bob.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question here.
Yeah.
You just opened the public meeting, correct?
No, I continued it.
Okay.
It was continued without testimony at the request of the applicant.
And we have green cards?
Have, sorry?
There's, uh, green cards from the notice mailing or verified?
Uh, we're going to have to check with, uh, Mr. Bott in regards to that. I don't have copies.
Was this another meeting of another board? There was a kerfuffle over green card. So.
Well, this will be continued and it will give us an opportunity to.
I just want to.
Yes, absolutely.
Be kerfuffled.
We've run into it before. But yeah, I, I don't have copies. I.
We're not avoiding it. Just postponing.
So let me make a. So let me make a note on the mailings. This was formerly a gas station?
A portion, yeah, there's the, the subject property is comprised of two lots, it's at the intersection of North Main Street and Plymouth Street. The lot closest to Plymouth Street, to the intersection, was formerly a gas station, that's correct.
Alright, part of our requirements are that the lot size for this neighborhood be 30,000 square feet, so these lots are gonna have to be put together? They're gonna have to be combined into a singular lot?
Okay, do you, how, what process would you like?
An A&R will do it.
For 81X, A&R, do we have to come for approval for the, probably A&R.
For an A&R, you'd have to come for an approval, yeah, and it's putting two lots together and that shouldn't, shouldn't be an issue.
Sure, okay.
You could check with Mr. Bott and to see if there's an easier, I know there's an alternative way to do it, but we only deal with the A&R, so...
Sure, sure.
So, were any underground storage tanks removed or...
The history of the property, it's basically, there's surrounded by gas stations, there's a Texaco, or excuse me, a station to the west of the, to the north of the property, further down North Main Street. The corner of the site is a former gas station, there's a gas station right here, which is Cumberland Farms, and there's a former gas station across the street, which was a Texaco. So, our subject property has never had a release, there were two, there were releases from the Cumberland Farm site and from the Texaco site.
I was more concerned about making sure that the underground storage tanks were removed, okay.
Short answer is, they've been removed, yeah.
But you've never had a release?
On this property.
Excellent, excellent. We can, we're limited to only approving two residential units on this property, anything more than that has to go through the transfer of development process and this isn't a receiving property for that, so the most we can approve is two in regards to this.
Okay, okay.
Can you explain that, what is that?
Transfer of development rights, so the town has approved two residential properties to be allowed over commercial properties, anything more than that has to go through the transfer of development rights, in other words, you will have to save a piece of property somewhere else in town that's on the, but the problem is, I don't believe, and Mr. Bott's not here to check on it, that this property is within the receiving area, so I don't believe it's an option, but we can, we'll check with Mr. Bott to find out in regards to that.
I guess I was a little unclear on that regulation, but we'll clear that up with Mr. Bott.
Yeah.
But in your bylaws, there's a calculation to it?
Right, that's through the transfer of development rights, then there's a calculation, because the town wants to allow some mixed uses, but on the other hand, the town wants to save property somewhere else, so if we're gonna allow a greater development on one property, the town wants to see another property saved, and that's, that's part of the, let me see if I have the exact number of it.
Can we get, tell us when we get a copy of that, so we know what it was?
Yeah, I believe it's 2272, two dwelling units allowed on second floor unless the transfer of development rights, and then it allows up to 15 based on the square footage and the transfer of the development rights in the, in the process.
And Fussin O'Neal will review that as well and confer with the town planner to, and we'll make note of our coordination with the town planner and our memo, so hopefully we can clarify any questions.
Just, yeah, so we know, that's all.
Where's, where's the second garage door opening and how is it accessed?
It's on opposite sides.
Well, I see one of them.
I think we deleted it.
Yeah, there's only, there's only one garage door opening.
Okay, alright.
It'll be back to two, because we deleted it to do with four apartments.
Yeah.
Alright, so we're gonna wanna see access to that, and then I guess we discussed the plumbing codes while you were here in regards to if trucks and cars are gonna be pulling in there, there's gonna be a requirement for a tight tank?
Yeah, there's a requirement for a floor drain and then if it's on septic, it has to be a tight tank, yeah, correct.
Firm the control, firm the trash. Mr. J, mind if I ask Glenn closer? Yeah. So, I just wanna understand this, two units and each unit is gonna have a garage? That's what you're doing on the base floor?
If we don't, so we modified that plan from our, originally we're gonna have two garage bays in the back, you know, like below whatever, we modified it for parking, we get four apartments, so if we go back to that, we'll be accessing from both sides.
We'll need less space, less parking spaces if we only have two units as opposed to the former, and then that's gonna have a door on each side.
But just for the public's sake and, you know, getting people in there, it's a, it's craftsmen tradesmen with an additional garage? Or is it gonna be four craftsmen tradesmen?
Four craftsmen.
Okay, alright. So this, we're not gonna go with this?
No.
Where their, where their garages?
If we have to go through what the guy was saying on that, I believe this is original, we have two apartments.
Yeah.
I'll look at this plan, this is our original, this would be what we'll go back to if we have to do so.
If you have to go, after you look into the transfer of rights?
It sounds like we are though, because if it's in the bylaws, we're not gonna go through that, at each step.
That's alright, if, just make sure that that's given to Mr. Bott, then we'll get a chance to look over it.
This was our original, we changed, we read the bylaws, think that we could just do it by the square footage, so.
Gotcha. We're gonna limit hazmat materials to some degree. You're required to have a 21-foot perimeter, vegetative perimeter around the parking lot based on the number of parking spaces you have. I personally don't mind seeing that brought back a little bit, but I have, I have questions here. I'm looking at page SP 1.1, and it looks like your landscaping plan is out on public property? Yours is, I'm at SP 1.1 and I don't have trees on mine.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that, that, that's, we just, that's existing paved surface of the roadway, that's as it is now, so we're just gonna, you know, plant that in, make no modification to it.
Okay.
The plantings are inside of this.
And what, what number of page are you on?
Well, this is, this is just a colored book of pictures, and that should be one thing for this, one thing for that.
Mine doesn't show the plantings. We don't have plantings on it. It basically shows the other, that's okay. You're gonna have, it's a publicly accessible building, you're gonna retail space in here?
It's publicly accessible and potential retail, yes.
Okay, any sides with a public entrance have to have 10-foot around the building? 10-foot vegetative buffer?
Yeah, the only public entrance is off the front.
It's off the front?
Off North Main Street.
Where are the residential entrances?
They were gonna be, what, to the rear here, I believe.
Side, yeah.
Side, side.
That's, I'm not entirely certain if that's considered a public entrance or not.
Well...
I don't know, it's a question I'm gonna ask, though.
Yeah.
We'll get an answer for that. I have a lot of, please go ahead.
Sorry.
No, no, don't be sorry.
So in terms of the screening around the parking area, the parking area, two sets of screening, we have an island, a landscape island, and then we have the screening along the property line, and then there's a travel driveway between that, so I was unsure whether we somehow, whether we met that standard or not for the, for the green space.
It requires a 21-foot vegetative buffer, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm saying there's a combination of 10 and 10.
Of 10 and 10? I'm sorry, where?
Oh, yeah, this is 10 foot wide and that's 10 foot.
Oh, yeah, this is, this is, it's, that's, the 21 feet is specific to three sides of the parking area, and I'm not, to be honest, I'm not overly concerned about the north side, there's a gas station there, but you've got a residential behind you and...
Right, so I, my question, I guess, to the board and to you, is that, does this, does this travel driveway count as a parking area?
Are you saying it's a gravel driveway?
No, it's a driveway, does that, that, it's just a way, it's just a driveway to get from one portion of the site to the other, does that count as the parking lot?
It's already existing? No, no.
No, portions of it have, but no.
I think you're talking about the 10-foot six area.
This whole area is like overgrown and the dilapidated...
You're talking about the 10-foot six area behind the building?
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is, the parking area is, is right here, and then we have this island and then this as the screening, it's interrupted by the driveway, but does that, can we count that as the, as the 20-foot buffer?
So if I may, Andy with Fussin O'Neal, the applicant's asking if the combination of the planted landscape strip along the side yard and the landscape island can combined meet the landscape buffer, where this instance, the drive aisle is considered part of the parking lot, it's a functional aspect of the parking lot, so it wouldn't be, you know, a sum of the two, so really the applicant would need to ask for the waiver required for the, just the landscape between the edge of the landscape strip and the property line.
We're gonna wanna see that heavily landscaped because of the resident that's out back.
Well, actually, for you.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So I guess, I guess what we're asking is, does the drive aisle, it's supposed to be above the, to the parking, so would that 10 feet count, because it's just parking and the rest of your driveway?
So the, the drive aisle itself is considered part of the parking lot, because you needed to access the spots, but I think a combination of landscaping or a solid fence along that stretch would usually address the board's concerns with, you know, getting a waiver request for that, so, not to speak for the board, but my experience with similar waiver requests.
Yeah, we're trying to keep the back aisle full of fire, you know, so they don't to the back and build on both sides.
I think the fire department mentioned they're gonna want that wider too.
I was gonna say, looking at 10.6...
They're gonna want 12 feet plus two feet on, on either side of that, so, but again, I don't speak for the fire department and as far as I know, they want access to three sides of the building, so, well, I have actually, I don't know if you received a copy, Assistant Chief Deputy Boyle, he had two recommendations, it will require an automatic sprinkler system, it is over 7,500 square foot threshold, and the road to the east side of the building contains a pinch point as narrow as 10 foot six inches. Carver Fire Department requests a minimum roadway width of 12 foot with two-foot clearance on either side. I will tell you, though, my biggest concern is this access on the Plymouth Street, it's too close to the intersection, it's too close to the neighbor's yard, especially if it's screened, and I think we've all seen the screening there, but we will be taking a sidewalk at, we'll arrange for a sidewalk there, but two cars, and that's gonna back up, we didn't allow it for safety reasons across the street at the car wash, because it's a blind corner, on a blind corner, and it creates a very real hazard on coming around the Plymouth Street corner with trucks or cars pulling in and out of there, taking a left turn out or a left turn in and crossing over and, in a very blind area there. I will say if, if you're willing to put in a sidewalk in front of the building, in front of the, the property here, or nothing big, even if it's just a gravel one, I'd be far more inclined to allow a substantial reduction in the required frontage on this, vegetative requirements on this.
Did, Mr. Chair, also, there are existing two curbs, is a curb cut in this area and is it existing curb cut over in this area? So you're removing the most dangerous curb cut from the project, and we're adding one over here further away from the intersection.
It's, it's, it's maybe 10 feet from the neighbor's driveway and it's on a blind corner that sees a lot of traffic and a lot of pedestrians, people walk to work up at Shaw's, they walk up to CVS, kids walk down to McDonald's and Cumberland Farms, it's, it's a blind corner and it's the only place the pedestrians have, so if you're gonna have cars taking left turns out of that entrance or left turns into that entrance with cars coming around the corner and pedestrians walking there, it creates a very real safety issue.
Can I, can I talk to that for a second?
Sure.
So, on that corner, I know you're saying about the landscape buffer, so if we were to add a sidewalk and if we were allowed to, because it's, you know, it's the...
Well, it's on your property, it's not, it wouldn't be on...
Yeah, because I mean, how far back would we have to come, we'd lose the whole landscape buffer, wouldn't we, pretty much?
Oh, right, just two, three feet, it doesn't...
36 inch, I think it's, because I mean, if we, if we gave them a sidewalk to walk by, because they're gonna stop, they're not gonna have, they're not gonna have a lot to cut through no more, but on the curb cut for the side, I understand what you're saying.
Right, right, no, I understa, so you're, okay, I, I'm, I have too many safety concerns about the entrance onto Plymouth Street and the fact that it wasn't allowed at the car wash for the safety reasons, for the same reasons, because you cannot safely take a left turn out of here, out of there, or a left turn in there and, and have any line of sight in regards to that, that blind corner that, that's there, I, there's a real safety, safety issue there, I, I'm willing... Do you have, do you have a specific reason why you need to have that?
Well, for the design of the building and, sorry Kevin, but the, the, we did a traffic study on this too, so, if we're gonna, if we're gonna go, can we like hold off on this thing right now?
Well, don't, we'll continue it, yeah, we're not gonna vote on anything, we need more information and we have some questions for Tom Bott.
Because honestly, that, that lot is tight, okay?
I know it is, yeah.
You're taking the one thing that makes it accessible to work both sides of the building without front parking, you know, without front parking, we moved entrances so we're coming off onto a side street, we're entering with a light that the traffic is stopped at, you know, so people are gonna either let somebody out or not, and they're gonna go in and out of them, you write a stop sign, you know, a stop light, so it's controlled.
Well, this particular intersection has the highest crash rate in the town of Carver, which is more than, or almost twice of what the regional crash rate is and twice what the, the state crash rate is, this is, this is an area of concern that's been outlined both in the master plan and several other areas, it's, it's a dangerous corner. It's, it's a dangerous corner, and we can't add to that danger is the problem. That's, it's, I'm willing to waive the other one over here because there's already a left turn on Main Street that'll allow you to get in and out of that, that area at fairly safely, and it's far enough away from the intersection. But this one here is maybe two car lengths from the intersection, so if you get two, three cars blocking there, all of a sudden, we're backing up traffic and people are trying to go left, people are trying to go right. It, it, it creates congestion and safety issues. I, I can't see how this could be made safe. But we'll take a look at it on the sidewalk and we'll, we'll have it staked out.
Yeah, the, uh, I'm sorry, the, um, the, that side, that side entrance to make this building work like that? And it sounds like we're already gonna get into the same thing we had on the last one. Can we, how do we, can we just stop this thing right now and just relook at it? Is there a way of doing that?
We can continue it. We'll be happy to continue it. At, at your request, we continue this, this, right. But, but we, you should take a moment to, to get whatever concerns and, and questions that, that the board has that, that might come up later to, to save you headaches and, and trouble in regards to this.
And can I weigh in on two of the items? Um, I guess there was, I think, two separate comments the board made. One was, um, recommendation on seeing a potential sidewalk, uh, on the frontage. Um, if you did propose one, I'd recommend a, a four-foot wide sidewalk to, um, meet ADA guidelines. You can go down to a pinch point of three feet, uh, if needed. Usually that comes into play with, uh, overhead utility poles and things that provide, uh, obstructions. But, um, I think, um, Fussin O'Neil would concur with the recommendation that would, uh, a sidewalk would be more beneficial than some additional vegetated buffer along that area. So, and the sidewalk itself would be included in that total buffer width. Um, the other item regarding the, uh, intersection on Plymouth Street, uh, that's something Fussin O'Neil can provide some more formal comment and input on. Um, it may be a situation where, uh, a one-way situation on that side might kinda be the middle ground where you could address some of the town's concerns, but still get access, uh, to circulate to your property. But, um, obviously, I'd, you know, give you and, uh, you know, ownership applicant team some time to look at that. And then historically, um, the board and the town planner have been okay with, um, some email communication between Fussin O'Neil and applicant. If there's some draft versions you wanna send, as long as we copy the town planner, we can give some initial feedback before you go too far along with a, a redesign, if that's an approach you wanna take.
My, my only concern with this is, is running to the same thing we had on, on our meeting is when they have something in mind that they're gonna deny right off the bat, where, and he's basically said, you know, he's not happy, he's not. It's already denied across the street, separate lot, there's, you know, they have different circumstances. So I just feel, without that entrance, this building doesn't work there.
Yeah, but could a one-way in that way, you know, only going that way or only come out that way solve part of it? Could you still have the double on the other side?
I, right, I, I mean, I could allow a right turn only into there, but, uh, if you're taking a left turn heading east, I, I couldn't, I couldn't allow that because you'd be crossing over on a blind corner. And it's just, it's, this intersection's already too dangerous.
Now, I, I noticed a bike rack, is that a preemptive strike? But my only concern was that's in the wrong spot, 'cause it should be over on the side. 'Cause the bikes would park it on the street.
The road you're taking away, how's that?
But the, um.
So, uh, Mike, you, the plans I had you gave last time, there's four apartments upstairs.
Yeah, but, well, it sounds like we're only gonna.
We're gonna go, we're gonna go to the tune, 'cause I mean, I'm not gonna go through all that and write out property, not even a budget to do that.
I, I, the question I had, even with this design, was this, one set of stairs up, and then the second exit is out the side window, onto the slippery roof, you know?
It's a sprinkled, it's a sprinkled building and co-ed on and bottom buildings, you need more access with a hallway and halfway.
And the water's coming from North Carver Water District, and they're gonna guarantee you water pressure. Water pressure for a sprinkler system?
We, uh, we had fifty-five pounds at Santana Way, right off the, off the hydrant. So it isn't a, it isn't a problem with water pressure on the.
No, it's a problem getting the water in the water pressure, and there's water pipe from the North Carver Water District.
Well, the, the water district's gonna, gonna have to provide water, 'cause you can't go on wells there, so you guys are gonna have to work something on that, huh?
I'm just saying, that's a round circle.
Yeah, but they do need, like, the, the pressure, so we had fifty-five pounds, I believe, over there. But the, but the thing is, you get the pressure for the sprinkler system, you don't have the volume to fight the fire, so that's why.
How long was before?
That's why they do the pools and stuff, but you do have adequate, you know?
And, um, in the apartments, there was no, um, washer dryer hookups?
Uh, I imagine.
Well, I mean, that's into the septic.
These ain't final things, these are concept plans, just for the elevations to show, and we put a footprint in there of the buildings, just.
'Cause that's just, you know, you own a four apartments, but nobody with laundry.
And dirty people. No, we get, like I said, we're, that was a concept plan, they'll, let me say, it, those are big apartments. And honestly, there's no room to, if, with that economic thing, as the guys are talking about, to do that. So it would be down to two apartments, and, um, I don't even know.
So that, that's gonna save you parking spots.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Less hot top and more grass.
Yeah, the, the sticking point, though, is, is, is the roadway, is that access to that? We looked at every different way to access that building to make it, to keep, and it's mainly keeping the buffer down the front and no, no street front parking lot. So we're calling fifty-eight the front of the building, you know, so it's a corner lot, so.
And have you looked into whether or not you could possibly have two entrances off of, uh, North Main Street? So you could almost do a loop around the whole building?
Well, that, I was gonna mention that, but I feel if, if it's too close to get in on Plymouth Street, which is less traveled road, they're gonna say no to that. 'Cause the traffic.
Well, the good thing is, is it's before the light.
Yeah, but where, that, our corner is at the light, you know, so.
Yeah.
The second entrance would be at the corner then, you know?
Aren't there two existing?
There are two existing.
Yeah.
Where do they line up?
So if you're, here's the thing, now you're removing, I'm sorry, done.
Where did the two existing line up on your plan? Are they at both sides of the building or are they?
They're pretty close, yeah. They work, we abandoned them, 'cause we figured the one traffic was.
What we have close to the intersection, and they're fairly wide, I hope they can see around there.
Lots of corners.
I wanna see you develop this property, so I wanna see you be able to get in. I'd like to see you be able to get in off of Main Street.
Yeah.
With two, you know, and almost do like a U around the property. I, I do understand where Connie's coming from. The only way that probably would fly is one way for truck access, but then, now you got, taking the left off.
But you are at, you are at a traffic light, you know what I'm saying? So you got controlled traffic, you know, you're stopped or whatever, people gonna let people go or whatever. And I would say, if you looked at the traffic study for that intersection, the accidents that happened out on fifty-eight, probably not on Plymouth Street. I mean, 'cause there's no, I know, it's a corner, but it's coming to a stop sign, 'cause nobody's flying to, you know? That's the corner of the lot. By the time you get there, you got a hundred and fifty feet, so, I mean, I just feel.
It's, from, from my experience over there, it's usually, uh, people turning left either off of fifty-eight or onto fifty-eight, they get, uh, uh, they get plowed by, uh, somebody on fifty-eight.
Yeah, the traffic impact would be out on the main road, so we thought having the entrance that way and keeping, we put the fastest entrance away from, on fifty-eight. Then we came down here and put it the fastest way, so you're away from the intersection. We did a traffic study to, you know?
Uh, yeah, our, our, we get a little, um, our traffic consultant from Gillum Associates, uh, indicated that there were no crashes at North Main Street Plymouth Street intersections or either site driveways in North Main Street or Plymouth Street. Um, so he found that there were no unit conditions to account for, um, to account for within the study area. It indicated that both driveways had adequate stopping site distance on North Main Street and Plymouth Street.
That's.
He's, he's a registered professional engineer.
Well, I, I, I'm just saying that Serped has come through and put it in our master plan, that this is an intersection, that's the worst one on Carver, and it needs to be dealt with. It has safety issues. I'm also saying that's a, that's a very blind corner, and.
How is it blind? Where is it blind from? That, the whole site is, is opened up now, this whole corner's open.
That, right, that, that corner's open, but coming up Plymouth Street and turning that corner back there, and sometimes this light backs up past that corner. Now you're gonna add more traffic in, in he, in here, and you're asking for people to be taking a left turn off of Plymouth Street to enter it and a left turn out of, out of the property onto Plymouth Street.
Yeah.
I, and it's, and that is, that is not a safe area to be doing that. It's not, and, and where you're proposing this is two cars lengths back from the stop line.
It's as far, well, it's as far back as we can propose it, and it's.
Right, and, and I understand, right. And it, and it, it's supposed to be seventy-five feet from other curb cuts, correct?
Correct.
And that's, that's the waiver you're requesting. I'm just saying that I don't see that that could be a safe entrance, in, in, in my opinion, and from, from the information that, that we have available to us.
Is that, roadway on Plymouth Street looks a lot like that. Once you go, once you, once you go, then you, you have the.
Correct, yes, yeah.
Turn, it's, it's an S curve.
Yeah, sure, sure.
It's like several S curves.
I drove that for, for years before, yeah.
Still a good, still a good distance back to the first curb, I mean, it's not like it didn't have.
So that disasses a traffic calming and slowing, it's not gonna increase speed, it's not a straight line, or, you know?
Yeah, I, well, I do know that if you try to make that a right turn only going into that property, then, especially for trucks, they're gonna have to go, they'll have to go past the light, deal with traffic trying to turn onto Green Street, come straight up Green, come straight up Green Street.
Well, it's still, you could take a left into here.
If you're.
On the fifty-eight.
But if you're coming in, if you're trying to get a truck into here.
Mm-hmm.
Then.
Then there should be sufficient room to drive around the building to do it. If you can't fit the fire truck through there.
Right, well, you're definitely gonna, I mean, that's definitely gotta be adjusted for the, for the fire truck and stuff, but. Depending on the truck that's coming in, it's, you could potentially have to go all the way down to Green Street and work your way up, uh, that way.
So Glenn, if you go down to, to two apartments, you get to take off four parking spots, right?
Right.
So if you take off four parking spots, can you turn this building sideways? You've already tried?
No, we've looked, we've looked at all, all the options, and it's, it's really the driveways, it's not the building. We have room to turn things around, but to get the buffer and get access, you're coming in from both sides. My only thing with this is, we did a traffic study, you know, I mean, you, you have curb cuts there, and you also, you turn onto Plymouth Street on the other side, you're making an immediate left into Cumberland Farms, you know what I mean? It's, and there's a corner right there.
It's much further from the intersection, from the stop line. It's, it's.
I don't know, we got a hundred and fifty foot lot.
Yeah, but Cumberland Farms has thousand trips a day. No, with a gas station, they have three thousand trips a day. We have a hundred trips per day.
We haven't seen you, I don't have a copy of the, your traffic study, so.
It was submitted, it was submitted, but before.
Then we'll have to ask to get a copy of it, because I, I didn't get a copy.
Yeah, the, the, the peak hour is estimated at, evening peak hour is five in and five out, so ten. And the morning peak hour is one in and three out, so four. Four cars, or ten, no, well, yeah, four trips, in and out, same car.
Is it checking?
Coming in there?
It is, sure, one, two.
It is not operating like the gas station and the car wash.
Yeah, but still, you gotta cross traffic within thirty feet of the intersection.
I don't believe it's thirty feet.
No.
No, it's, that, that's a hundred and fifty foot.
Well, the stop line isn't noted on here, but, uh, but we can, when we go on our sidewalk, we can have it all staked out, so we'll get a much better idea of, of where everything is, is located. It'll give us a much better perspective.
On the big picture on the front.
Yeah, it looks like the two on, the two entrances on, on fifty-eight, but again, yeah, I mean, you can.
There already been, there already existing, so, I mean.
Yeah, we're servicing two properties. One, one was a gas station with a lot more, um, you know, access, obviously, a lot.
Yeah.
The other was a, a bar, so, yeah.
And why can't you come in off of fifty-eight?
I'm glad, I wanted to come in over fifty-eight originally, but we didn't feel that coming in off of the main road at that. We thought this was better, you know, bringing the traffic to the other side, you know?
Yeah.
And that's my opinion, it's still better, because I know what you're saying about Plymouth Street, but.
God, I wish they would've made a better design on fifty-eight.
And all the tra- and all the tra- any, anything that is, came forward about the traffic and the accidents, they're out on fifty-eight, they're not on Plymouth Street. I mean, you're not, you're not.
Right, 'cause nobody's turning into this property on Plymouth Street. Nobody's turning into the car wash from, from that area, pulling out of the car wash from that area, for much of the same reason.
They're getting into the accident, they're on fifty-eight where they are.
Well, not down where the, the car wash has been put.
Yeah, I mean, we've got a.
And, and, yeah, and I get it with the Cumberland Farms, but that accessway is set much, is, is set considerably further back.
I don't believe that.
On, well, on Main Street, it's very close on Main Street to the corner. But on Plymouth Street side, it's pretty far back.
Connie, it is only about three car lengths on that corner.
On which?
On.
Well, I was just, I was measuring, no, no, I was, I was measuring.
Right here.
Yeah, I was going right here, and then I was going from that stop line, and that brings it up.
Yeah, so this right here, uh, is no more than three car lengths from here to there.
So just a rough, a rough measure, right, right like that, right?
Yeah, to where, to where people stop, yeah.
And I put the stop line there, and that brings it all the way to this edge here. And, and we're gonna have to look, because I know this is their property, I'm not gonna get involved in that. As far as I'm concerned, that's something you'll have to deal with the neighbors, the fact that maybe they're encroaching in that area on your property. But I also have to look at this big curve, there's a driveway here, a driveway here, a driveway here, a driveway here. It's, it's problematic, there's people walking up there and there's no place for people to go. There's, there's people on bicycles, there's joggers, and two cars are gonna, are gonna back up right, right to the, just about the front of it. But again, when we do a sidewalk, we can have it staked out, and it'll give us a much better feel for where it's going. 'Cause, uh, I mean.
Are there old railroad tracks way back there, too?
Uh, that's fine with me, I'm, right, I'm happy with that, but I, I think it can all be accomplished this way without.
Bugging my friend or whatever it is.
He was thinking it was less congested.
Well, they called for us to put it, put him on fifty-eight, too, but, um, again, I, I think it's, it's a better option, it's existing, and it would be, and it'd be tough to turn down, but I, I just don't, I, 'cause. You don't see people walking, I see people walking down here.
Oh, I know, they do.
They absolutely do. Even crossing the road is a, is a hazard.
I remember that.
So if there was sidewalk and they were allowed to come in off of, both, they'd have to have two ways to come in off of fifty-eight.
Yeah. Right, and we can work with that.
Having two ways.
Right, or, yeah?
I just, yeah, I'm just, like, I, we keep, we're talking about fifty-eight, but I think that, that driveway, that close to the stoplight, coming out onto fifty-eight, it's gonna create more, isn't it?
Uh, I'll have, um, one of my senior traffic engineers weigh in on this formally. Um, I dabble in traffic engineering, but I don't wanna speak out of turn, so we'll, we'll get a.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was gonna say.
We're, we're in Massachusetts, what works doesn't work, and what doesn't work, works.
Anybody that's gonna try to take a left out of that property onto fifty-eight is gonna.
It's gonna be problematic, but.
They're, they're gonna think twice about being where they are. 'Cause I, I, 'cause I know.
Access onto fifty-eight, very, but you could take a left out onto Plymouth Street and then go to the light and get access to fifty-eight.
Yeah, 'cause I, I know people trying to get out on High Street, uh, trying to get across, take a left out of High Street, they, they, yeah, they'll. You'll waste an entire afternoon sometime.
Sure.
So if you limit the only access to fifty-eight, you have to make that left-hand turn out of one of those two access points.
Yeah, and it's still safer than taking a left. Yeah, and it's still safer than taking a left turn out onto the Plymouth Street on that blind corner.
I think that's an opinion that I disagree with.
Yeah, we can't do that.
Um, if I may ask a question, if you go to four garage bays, those are gonna be four separate garage bays, right? Two garage bays?
We just took one out for parking, won't be the four apartments, we're not gonna do the four apartments, so we'll hold that down.
The two garage bays you have, would they be pull-through garage bays with access on both sides?
No, it would be quite, maybe for each apartment.
If you are going down to two apartments and removing four spots, do you think you might be able to get pull-through bays, which may help with onsite circulation?
Well, the only problem with that is they'd be two separate units, you know? We did the garage, the apartment units, the access and the back road storage and everything.
So the, okay, so the tenants, ground floor tenants wouldn't need access all the way through? Gotcha.
So it'd be hard to make them, you know, accessible to get through, you know?
Okay.
The, the, the one thing I want to address is the, the fire, I did talk to Jesse and he said, you know, there, there is access because you can get in and hit the other ends and on the, on that back road, to maintain the green space and everything, like Bob said, we're doing brass pave to bring it out to the fourteen, whatever, so we meet their requirements and it's still green space, you know?
Yeah, he'll approve of all-weather surface, so it'd be an all-weather surface shoulder.
We can meet Jesse's, you know, Jesse's comments to debate, that makes sense, you know, and that, that brings us into compliance with that end of it. The only thing is honestly, I mean, unless you guys have any other questions for this, I mean, I don't want to spend five months going back and forth about, because I mean, I can understand, my whole problem with this whole process is we pay a fortune for review engineers and if we're gonna have review engineers and traffic engineers, everybody weigh in and we bend over backwards to change plans to meet everybody's work and then just because you don't like it because you don't think it works, it doesn't, it's no sense in me frigging even doing it. You know, I'll do something else there, you know? It won't be as good for the town, let's put it that way. That's a good, that is a good project for the town, it's a nice building, looks like a railway station, be light commercial use and a couple apartments, clean up that corner that's been a mess for years, I mean, but I can't, I'm, I'm not going through the same thing I went through on the last building because I can't, I can't pay for experts and engineers to review and have opinions and comments and meet everything they want and then just have it because I can't do it, so. What do we have to do now to like put this on hold or whatever and then go from there? Just tell me.
Um, yeah, it, it's, it's up to you if you want an extension and come back whenever you feel, uh, whenever you feel you're ready.
What?
As I say, we'll take the extension and if you want to formally, we'll talk to Tom.
Okay.
Yeah, Fussin O'Neil can, we, we have a draft memo, we can address some of the items that came up in the hearing tonight, so you can have that and use that to make your final decision on whether or not you want to move forward with the project.
No, I mean, no, I mean, basically, I don't even waste the money if you guys review me, I don't put anything more into it. So whatever we have to do to just get rid of this right now, that's what I want to do. And I'll come back with something else and it's, well, I'll be back here, I'll come back with something else on that corner, so.
Would Tom be recommending him to withdraw prejudice? Is that what he'd be doing?
That's my understanding.
That what?
Uh, withdraw without prejudice, so it's-
We can't withdraw without prejudice once the public hearing starts. So my recommendation would be to continue it to the next planning board and allow Tom Bott to-
To meet the public.
To work on something with them so that-
No, I'm good, I want to withdraw it, I don't even want, I don't want, I don't want to spend one more nickel on denying it.
Well, either way, if you continue, you know, we can put a pin in, uh, our review and then till the next hearing, but I, I think just for legal concerns, I'd want to defer to the town planner to make sure that you're closing this one out and I'm not precluding you.
I'm just not wanting to waste anybody's time.
Right, I was gonna say, we can, we can just, um, do a continuance indefinite, right?
At, at their request, yes, yeah.
Yeah, just say, instead of, instead of going through the hassle of trying to figure out if we're, if we can withdraw it or anything else like that, we can just say, let's go for a continu, an indefinite continuance.
Well, it can't, it can't be indefinite, but-
And whenever you have your project ready, whenever you make your changes or whatever you, whatever you want to do, you say, okay, this is my plan now.
I'm telling you right now, I'm withdrawing this from my building, so it's, it's just off the table.
Let us continue it to the next meeting.
Yes, we'll continue it and we need to, you need to formally do that through Mr. Bott to withdraw your application, if that's what you choose to do.
Yeah, so we formally, we formally go to Bott to withdraw, but you guys just vote, we don't have to be here, we don't have to wait no more times. Good.
Yep.
I believe that's the process. Yeah, I don't, you, you don't need to be here.
Yeah, that's all, so we'll just send an email or whatever to, to Tom, Fussin to pull this one off.
Twenty-four.
Okay.
Bye, thanks guys.
Thank you. So, um, the chair will accept the motion to continue the public hearing on the application of Pialo Concrete Forms Inc., requesting a special permit site plan review located at North ninety-three North Main Street until October twenty-fourth at seven PM, meeting room one, Carver Town Hall.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gatsky. Seconded by Ms. Sardillo, further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gatsky?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
Alan Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. All right. The last order of business is a request for one year extension for subdivision completion assessors map thirty-two lots one dash one through one dash six for the Ricketts Pond Business Park subdivision off Spring Street in a Spring Street Innovation District. We received a letter from Mr. Opachinsky requesting a one-year extension to complete the construction of Ricketts Pond Drive. Seems they're having some difficulty removing the remaining earth at the project due to the high silt content. And that's, and an extension is absolutely necessary to avoid damage to the finished roadway, is, is a recommendation. Um, I would like to have some questions answered on this, but on the other hand, we, we did know this was coming, that the amount of earth and that's why we expected, uh, last year when we approved the one-year extension that we would have an update when they come back. So how does the board feel in regards to this?
Well, there seems to be some extraneous conditions in there too. That's the one I remember.
Yeah, but-
Too many papers.
Nothing that, that would concern us in regards to our decision. So the, the chair will accept the motion to approve, uh, a one-year extension on, uh, subdivision completion assessors map thirty-two lots one dash one through one dash six for the Ricketts Pond Business Park subdivision off Spring Street until October tenth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gatsky, seconded by Mr. Robinson. Further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gatsky?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
Alan Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. I need that out. All right, uh, planning board member notes. Nothing off the top of my head, it's, uh, breast cancer awareness month. Unfortunately, it's a sad subject that is, um, coming to way too many people's lives. All right, seeing that, what else we got? Future meetings, October twenty-fourth, November fourteenth. So if there's nothing further, the chair will accept a motion for-
I'd just like to, excuse me.
Oh, please, please.
I just want to send my thoughts and prayers to Israel and what they're going through and, um-
Absolutely.
You know, in my thoughts and prayers.
Oh, absolutely, they're, they're calling it the nine eleven of Israel, but I, I think that's just, as bad as nine eleven was, what?
Yes. Um, and, uh, I'd like to just give a, a quick shout out to the, uh, youth football group, um, they had Stella last week, um, and it's very exciting, hope everybody can come out and watch and support these guys, um, they are really doing a great job, um, shout out to the coaches. Chris Villanueva, Brad Hawes, Buddha over at HD, uh, as we like to refer to him, and, um, Josh Liddell and myself, we are taking it to them.
Good job, I heard you working hard out there this afternoon.
These guys were, they had a fantastic game last week, all three levels, uh, won their games, uh, against Abington, so.
Go Carver.
Yes, doing great stuff out there.
All right, Mr. Robinson?
I'm all set.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams? We want to thank Andy Glanz as always for his invaluable help, service and just for his cheerful nature.
Happy to be here.
I will, the chair will accept a motion, um, for adjournment.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Gatsky. Mr. Gatsky?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
Alan Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you all very much and have a good evening.